We'll call it a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, February fifth, two thousand nineteen, four thirty P M. The order first item on the agenda is to tell you we've got new tablets here, and if we look confused, we probably are. So anyway, we'll go on to the consent to gen items.
I'll offer, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the consent to gen items.
Second. We have a motion, the second approved to consent the gen items, any discussion on any? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most no, most carries. We'll go on to item number two point one, raffle and gambling permit for Church of Saint Mary's. And that's for March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer a motion to approve that as well.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most no, most carries. Item three point one, performance measurement survey, two thousand eighteen. Chris, I'm gonna assume it's yours.
Yeah, so, uh, we're bringing this item back, uh, cause it was, um, tabled. We are gonna increase the number of surveys that are sent out, uh, in each ward to one twenty-five, uh, for a total of, uh, five hundred. And then I just cleaned up some of the questions, uh, I broke out, uh, the park and rec, um, question. So one is the quality of the park and rec programs, and then the next one is the quality of the facility. So I broke it into two questions instead of one, and then cleaned up the new cat question for just overall programming instead of quality and programming, so, rating the program.
I noticed that, I appreciate, appreciate that.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a none, entertain a motion? Oh, we don't need one, do we? This is just a...
Um, well, it's either to decline or participate in the survey.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll offer the motion to participate.
Second. We have a motion, the second, any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most no, most carries. Item three point two, contract with Bolton and Mink Incorporated. Steve?
Uh, Mr. President, I believe Mr. Snorbrick was gonna make comments if you have any questions, yeah.
Mr. Snorbrick, I'm looking here, I'm not looking up, thanks.
Dave Snorbrick, Community Development Director. Um, last September, uh, city council staff had a discussion about the need for a drainage study, um, in and around the area that, uh, the city had acquired for the expansion of our industrial park. Uh, at that time, you directed the finance director to set aside thirty thousand dollars in the twenty nineteen budget for that purpose. Um, staff has solicited, uh, proposals from, uh, engineering firms to do the work. Um, a total of four proposals were received. A four-member, uh, committee of city staff reviewed the proposals. And listed, um, on your request for council action form are the, uh, names of the firms, the, um, average score, the fee amount, and that's for the, um, the base, uh, uh, work, and then, um, optional services, and then, uh, total, uh, combined cost. And if you look at the, um, at that box, uh, you'll see that Bolton and Mink, um, was rated the highest. I would note that of all four staff members that reviewed the proposal, they were the highest of all four. Also a significant difference between the first and, um, second place, um, proposals. The criteria that's used to analyze the proposals, there are actually ten different items. Um, one of them is cost, but that means there's nine others that are not cost-related. One of the, uh, differences between the, um, first and second place proposals is in the number of hours worked. The, uh, Bolton and Mink proposal has a total of, um, three hundred thirteen hours worked, whereas the, uh, second place proposal has two hundred forty-five. So that's where your cost difference is. I guess staff believes that the additional hours are necessary for the, um, storm, uh, water study in this particular area. The communities is a number of, uh, unique, uh, features to this area, uh, one of which is we have a forest main that goes across a part of our property. We have a manhole in the middle of our property, and then we've got a tie line. And so we've got some different issues to deal with and would be in a typical vacant, uh, land, uh, situation. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Dave?
I have a question for Roger. When we've talked about taking low bids in the past, I know we have to meet certain criteria, you remind me what those are?
I think in this case, because this is a professional services contract, um...
Not a purchase.
It's, it's not a purchase of, um, materials, it's not a construction job. It's, it's like hiring an accountant or an attorney or, you know, any consultant. So it's something where I think you can go with what you think is the best result at the best price. You don't have to take the lowest bidder.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? See a none?
Yeah, I, I have one, um, the optional services, are we planning on doing the optional services, is that...
Staff would recommend that we do that at this time, yeah.
So what would those optional services be, like, and why would they be optional?
Um, they would lay out the utilities, lots, streets, um, you know, it, so that when, what we would end up with is kind of a finished product, so that if someone came in and said, "I'm interested in building in this particular location," we'd say, "Okay, we've got a lot of this size that's served by the street." Utilities are gonna be in this particular location, so it gives us a, a finished product to work with.
So we're looking at like a forty-four thousand dollar ticket item.
Um, total would be thirty-seven.
Well, the total, that's with the optional.
But you had said you wanna include the optional services.
That's included in the thirty-seven.
Okay, so thirty-seven is the total.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven, five eighty-seven, alright, thank you. I know we've had very good luck with Bolton and Mink, they've been a strong, um, company with our city, so I'm gonna go ahead and offer, uh, the, uh, to approve the contract.
Second. We have a motion, the second, any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most no, most carries. Item four point one, uh, B and L Bar Alley Closure, Bach Fest Celebration. That's for March second, two thousand nineteen, from eight to two P, two A M., and March third, two thousand nineteen. Just one of the standard questions, fire and police were notified of it, correct?
I'll offer the resolution and waive the reading, um, to, to allow the temporary closure of the alley.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, offer resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Oh, it's resolution.
Resolution, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. President, uh, just a point of per- clarification on the previous gen item, did the motion include the optional services in the contract?
Yes.
Yes, for the...
Yes.
Thank you, just wanted to be sure.
Yep, thank you.
Alright. Item four point two, Green Mill, Best Western Plus Bach Fest Celebration, and that's for March second, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any more discussion? That's the resolution. Offered resolution, waived reading, any more discussion?
Same thing, they've had contact with fire and law enforcement. Thank you.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Excuse me, um, Mr. President, are, I think there's two gen items?
We're gonna do a separate.
Are you doing these separately?
Public hearing also.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a public hearing.
On the, uh, variables.
We're gonna do the public hearing and, okay, make sure there's nobody here to talk about that.
Anybody here?
You're gonna schedule that.
It's to schedule the public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing for the nineteen. How are we scheduling?
I think you wanna maybe make a note here on Saturday, March second, two thousand eighteen, it says on here, and it's not nineteen, there's a typo on here.
Oh, yeah, someone made a typo. Uh, so we have two separate motions, so I'm gonna, uh, offer the first one and offer the resolution, waive the reading to extend the liquor license to the parking lot adjacent to Green Mill and Best Western, twenty-one oh one, South Broadway, for the Bach Fest after-party, an outside event to be held on Saturday, March second, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Second, I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at four thirty P M. For a request for noise variance to permit an amplified music in the parking lot adjacent to the Green Mill and Best Western on Saturday, March second, two thousand nineteen, from four P M. to eleven thirty P M. during the after, during the Bach Fest after-party.
Second. We have a motion, the second, any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most no, most carries. Item number four point three, New Ulm Public Library donations and memorials. I think that's it, yep. Okay, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting donations, memorials to the New Ulm Public Library for the period October first, two thousand eighteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point four, Alina Park and Rec Grant. I don't know if Mr. Schmitz wants to come to the mic and just brief us again on the summer thing with last year.
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Director, President Schmitz and counselors, um, this has kinda become an annual grant application with Alina Health to fund, uh, some of our free summer programs. I'd like to now introduce our relatively new recreation program supervisor, Liz Malloy, and assist her in, um, answering any questions you might have. Liz?
Hi, I'm Liz Malloy, the Recreation Program Supervisor. Uh, this grant will help us, uh, do rec on the go for a second year. Uh, last year, we were able to run it at forty-five, um, events, averaging about forty-five participants per event, uh, plus special events, um, and reach all areas of the community.
Can you talk a little bit about where you're going with this park on the go?
Um, last year, we were at seven parks every week, um, those were Harmon, Lincoln, North, Washington, South, and Riverside. And then we had, um, additional, uh, parks that we went to throughout the summer.
I know there's some discussion when we first started this that I really liked about getting this park on the, um, park on the go to get into places where there wasn't parks that were available. Um, is that, is that part of on the, I haven't seen the list of where you've all been, but was, did that happen last year as well?
Um, yeah, last year, they were at, uh, Trollick Estates in the Mobile Village, uh, once a month throughout the...
And how did they go over? Did they get a lot of people, or no, or...
Um, they had two cancellations due to weather, and then enrollment was kind of low, um, so that's something we'll just have to promote and get the word out more for those.
Pretty high population of kids in the trailer courts, so, okay, I know they have bought a swing set there as well, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, any more questions? Thank you. Being at the Park and Rec Commission, they were recommended highly to move forward to whether, uh, offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing grant application to Alina Health's Neighborhood Health Connection program for up to ten thousand dollars to assist in funding the new Mobile Rec on the Go and the Adult Child Yoga in the Parks Program.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point five, Park and Rec donations. Again, at the, uh, Park and Rec meeting, they voted to accept, so I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept the following donations to the City of New Ulm for the Park and Rec Department. German Park, fifty dollars cash from Sharon Heck, ten thousand dollar pledge from Dr. Ian Vogel. Archery Program, a thousand dollars cash from New Ulm Chapter of Isaac Walton League. Riverside Park Programming, thousand dollars cash from the New Ulm Chapter of the Isaac Walton League, and the Herman Monument National Historic Landmark nomination, two thousand dollars cash from the Herman Monument Society.
I'll second.
We have a motion, the second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point seven, Senate Public Hearing for the two thousand nineteenth Utility Street and Alley Improvements Group One Project, Mr. Kaler.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, this is the second and largest, uh, project listed in the two thousand nineteen capital improvement project or plan. Uh, we would like to, or we recommend that we move this project forward by scheduling the public hearing as listed on, uh, March nineteenth.
Thank you.
I'll offer the motion.
Second. We have a motion, the second, any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most no, motion carries. Item four point eight, uh, Historic Rehabilitation Subgrant Program Grant Application.
Alright, good evening, John Nisley, planner with the City of New Ulm. Um, recently, staff has been notified, uh, that there are requests for proposals out, um, from the National Park Service and also the Department of the Interior for, um, this historic revitalization subgrant program. This is an entirely new grant program that hasn't been offered before, um, and, um, different a little bit in the fact that typically these grants are to look into types of studies or look into what work needs to be done. This is more of a brick and mortar type of grant application where they actually want work to be done on those historic buildings. The, the program goals are really to support the rehabilitation of those historic properties at the national, state, local levels, um, in order to protect, foster economic development of those rural communities through a subgrant program from the state, tribes, or certified local government, which the City of New Ulm is. Program will fund the actual physical, uh, preservation of these projects for the historic sites and can include some architectural and engineering, uh, services for that physical preservation. Um, the nice thing is, there is not a, uh, grant, um, match required, although if we do offer up, um, some sort of funding as, as a match, it does help that grant application go a little bit further and look at, uh, look a little bit better, um, to the federal government. The funding availability is roughly from one hundred all the way up to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, we can apply for with a total of five million available, uh, for the entire, um, U S for, for this year. So...
Chances are what, Mr. Nisley?
Well, I was just, uh, telling these folks earlier, the nice thing is, I was talking with Ship Owen, and actually, the City of New Ulm was the first one approach, to approach, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office about this grant in the entire state, so although the odds are pretty low, um, we're actually looking into it, and it doesn't seem like other communities have, have brought it forward yet.
So do you have anything targeted, or what do you have targeted for the, the funds?
So we would be looking at the, uh, Historic Downtown District, um, and then we'd, or if, uh, the project was moved along enough, yeah, we could also consider, um, the rehabilitation of the Herman Monument. I don't know that the timeline's gonna work out for that, um, it might work out better for the downtown district.
They said there was no matching grant, but is there in-kind, do they allow for what they call in-kind, your staff time, administrative time?
Yes.
So, cause those are always good to include all that data, cause it does take time, grants aren't always free, you have to do the work.
Absolutely, yes, and we'll be...
Reports and crap.
Yep.
Great, I, why not try for it?
Anybody have any more questions, John?
Hear a none, I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, authorizing staff to submit the Historic Revitalization Subgrant Program Grant Application for the Rehab of Historic Properties in the Commercial Center Historic District, um, or for the Rehab of the Herman Monument.
Second. We have a motion, the second, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion?
Yep, John, I have one, John, I have one more question. Um, when we talk about matching funds, how are you gonna answer that question? Because, you know, if it's the Herman Monument, there may be funds, but how do you, how do you answer that?
Right, so the Herman Monument, if we were to go that route, um, we would have to be further along to know exactly what we'd be trying to rehabilitate on that and have estimates on that, um, and then I would go to those groups, um, and, and solicit, say, "Are, are you willing to donate any funds towards the match?" Um, in addition, the city does hold the Small Cities Development Grant, um, these grant funds that we currently have, um, and that could be used, um, in particular for the downtown district, um, as showing a part of a match, um, towards that grant.
Okay, thank you.
John, with this motion we just made, I, I notice that we're, are we locking ourselves into just the downtown and Herman? What if there was another project, so, are there any other options? I don't wanna lock us in by that terminology we just used.
No, I told, I absolutely understand, and looking at the grant, uh, program guidelines, they, they really want to foster economic development, so, um, I would say that, you know, a lot of other grant programs might go towards a single building or something that, uh, might be just someone's home or something like that for the rehabilitation. They're really, really looking at the business aspect of this.
Alright, just wanna make sure we weren't locking ourselves in.
And the deadline is pretty quick, March first is...
Yeah, the request for proposals just came out at the end of December.
Sometimes they do that on purpose to weed out a bunch.
Any other questions, John? Okay, thank you, we have...
Yep.
Uh, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counsel... I lost it. Hold on.
That's okay, I lose it too here.
Who was the first and second? I, I, that, I don't know where it went.
Schultz and Christian.
Schultz and Christian, yep.
Now I can get to the recorded vote, okay, Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point eight, bid award for A V I for H D Consent Server Upgrade Project. There we go, that's a long one, go for it.
Steven Sherman, Cable Access Coordinator, uh, so, New Cat is looking to replace the, uh, standard definition content drive with an H D, uh, version, which would allow us to output, uh, high-definition quality, uh, video content, so we could, uh, eventually get an H D channel, so, this is the first step of that, is getting the equipment. Um, and so we're looking at going with A V I as the, or the lower bidder, uh, we have previous experience working with the company, and, uh, they provided a better, uh, option for the, um, uh, customer support.
Mr. President, I serve on that commission, and, um, we had some good discussion on, on this, and what we're excited about is this the last, kinda one of the last steps to get to high definition on our New Cat channel that a lot of people have been wanting for a long time, so I'm excited to move this forward, there was no real concern from, um, the commission, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, approve the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Most no, most carries, thank you.
He's got another one.
I think I'm up next.
Alright, let me get to it then. Alright, four point nine, attendance at the two thousand nineteen N E B Conference in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Uh, so, Cable Access Department is requesting, uh, that the coordinator myself and the full-time technician, uh, attend the N E B Conference this year. N E B is, uh, kind of the largest, uh, video conference in the, uh, nation. It provides opportunity to see what, uh, upcoming equipment and technology is, uh, coming out soon, so that way we can, uh, know what we can, uh, recommend to the city. Um, it also provides, uh, access to, uh, professional development classes, so we would each be taking three classes over the course of the conference. Board recommended that we, uh, provide a full report, uh, with their recommendation of attending this conference.
Good. Mr. President, we, uh, there, since there is so much to learn about moving to this high definition, I don't think we would have normally approved two staff to go to a, a national conference like this, but because of the huge amount of data that they need to learn and gain those contacts when they start installing this software and hardware, that we felt it was important that, um, both Mr. Sherman and his, um, assistant attend this conference, and, um, and it was supported by the full commission, and we did ask for a full report back when they do come back, um, from this conference. So with that, I'll go ahead and, uh, offer a motion to approve their conference attendance, and also it is in their budget as well.
See a motion, the second, any more discussion?
Um, yeah, it is, it, three thousand dollars covers both.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and it is within their budget, so, yep.
Alright. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Most no, most carries. All's no, motion carries, thank you. Good luck. Both ways, in case you use any. Uh, let's see. Item four-ten, yep.
Yep.
From the Renew Recreation Center Projects Construction Methods, Chris.
All right. So this will be, um, the vote that was, uh, brought before you before the work studies session, going over the different, um, uh, construction methods that we wanted to move forward with. Um, my recommendation and staff recommendations is to move forward with construction manager at risk. Um, but, uh, I'm here to field, myself, Elwood, Ryan, and Tom are all here to field any questions that you have about the delivery methods, um, moving forward. And I know, Les, you were gone, so if you have any questions, you know, let us, let us know, and we can, we can address those.
Anybody have any questions concerned? We all had the presentation, I think it's the way to go, so.
I guess I, I listened to it twice, and, um, I'm comfortable with the CMR. So if that's stack, staff recommends that, I'm okay with that.
I sat through it two times also and was leaning more towards owners rep, but, you know, after hearing more information about other cities and, you know, I, yeah, I guess I'm comfortable with it if.
Any more discussion?
So I guess I'll make a motion to, um, move forward with the CMR, Construction Management Delivery Service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Mr. President.
CMA? CMA?
CM.
CMR.
It's the CMR, but I think we need to be clear what this applies to. Um, that this is the CMR method for the renewed projects at the Recreation Center.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to go with the CMR Construction Management at Risk, um, that involves the renewed project at the, um, Recreation Center. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item four point eleven, first reading of ordinance number nineteen dash zero three, zero. Roger.
Uh, Mr. President, fortunately, we've changed our city charter, charter.
The first time you're gonna get to enjoy it.
But I'm, I'm not going to have to read this, if you want me to, I certainly will, but, um.
I offered to raise, waive the reading.
You don't even have to do that. I think it's, it's really, um, in the future, I talked with Mr. Schnoberg about this. We'd put these new ordinances on for the first consideration, and if you wanted them to be read, it certainly would be appropriate. Um, but I think this is a sub, a substantial ordinance, there's a lot of, uh, language in this. Uh, Mr. Schnoberg could probably address any questions that you have, but, uh, there are parts of it that are fairly essential with, that relate to some of the provisions for small cell wireless facilities under an FCC ruling or order that may or may not hold up to a court challenge. We basically have until April fifteenth to actually get the ordinance in place. And the thought was, we'd been looking for a long time at also making some changes to the city's right-of-way ordinance and, um, the Assistant City Engineer, uh, Stadheim, it's put a lot of work into that. So we're consolidating the two to try and take care of as much as we can. Um, we've went through a number of different revisions of this. We're still, uh, speaking with other city staff about it to make sure everybody is on board with it. Um, if, especially if the PUC, if they would have any, um, changes that they would want to propose that we would recommend, we could always wrap those into the final version, uh, when you bring it up for the second consideration.
Thank you.
So it's a twenty-six-page ordinance talking about, um, wireless facilities. So if people in the audience have an interest in this detailed policy, which I'm sure many do, they can contact city staff and get some more information on this.
Absolutely.
It would be online to read right on the.
They could be online, they can read all twenty-six pages, but if they have questions, they can follow up with.
In addition, it also establishes a permit process, a registration process, just for contractors and others who might want to be working in the city rights-of-way.
Sure.
So it does go beyond just the small cell wireless.
And I think I would've got a lot, or I got a lot more out of that two-minute discussion than I would've got out of you reading that for twenty, reading twenty-six pages. As we did last year and previous years. So with that, I will, uh, let's see.
No, it's just the first consideration.
We don't need.
Oh, that's right, we don't need a motion.
Nope. So we're going to report as claims paid and the recor, claims to be paid. Claims paid in the amount of one million, one hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents, and approve a list of claims to be paid in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and, nine hundred dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on any? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.
I think we click sign out.